You didn't miss all the raindrops?
Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Tracy City Council at 6:30, uh, what, 3:00 PM. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so did everybody get a chance to read the minutes? Were there any corrections, typos?
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries approval of the minutes. Any changes to the agenda?
Five changes to the agenda. 10D is a request to waive special assessments for a property located at 192 Fourth Street. There's three resolutions. One is a resolution that will go along with that if you decide to do that for that property. The next resolution is for a change order for the infrastructure improvement and then a resolution accepting deputy register reimbursement grant. And 13C is library minutes.
Make a motion to approve or amend it.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody have anything to say? Hearing none, we'll move on to petition requests and communications. Appointment, appoint Diane Campbell Deputy Clerk.
Just requesting that we appoint Diane Campbell to Deputy Clerk for some 90% of the duties that she does on a daily basis are clerk related and that'll relieve some of the workload for other things and allow her to complete some of the tasks without chasing around to get them done, so.
Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
First and second, discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Small Cities Development Program Grant, grant approved. Jeff?
Let me get up there?
Sure.
The, we wanted to announce tonight that the grant that we had applied for, the Small Cities Development Grant that we applied for in the last year, we weren't sure we were going to get it, but as of last week, we were given the total amount of $579,000. That will be coming for low income loans for housing and they will be coming over the next, probably by next February or March. There's some things that need to be done here in October, actually September and October, and then they're going to start taking some applications probably later in the year, but then the grants will be ready to go by, by February and March for this coming spring. So this is a big deal because we'll be able to, the grants that we applied for this time are going to be actual, before they were a lot of times 80 and, or 70 and 20 or 50-50 grants. These are actually grants that, that about half of them are going to be 100% grants, so there will be no payback on that as long as you're in the house for 10 years. So it'll be kind of a, a scale when it comes down to if you stay in the house for 10 years, it's completely paid for. There'll be a lot more information that'll be coming out in the newspaper this Wednesday and then over the summer months and fall, we'll let the city know when people can start applying for it. There's also going to be in the newspaper this Wednesday, there will be a, a map of where we're going to be giving these grants out to. Again, this is a very big deal considering we've got some issues, you know, in the, in the city with some housing and this is really going to alleviate some of those issues with what I would call free to almost free money. So, any questions?
So it's your training in early June, is that, who all needs to attend that?
Diane and I are going to go to that.
So that's not something the council needs to know?
No, no. I got a couple of them. I think there's actually two of them that I go to. One of them for sure is on June 26th, but I'm going to be spending some time in Marshall with UCAP who wrote the grant for us and they're going to be helping me through some things too, since this will be the first time I've gone through something like this.
Great.
But right now, just, it's, you know, there's, it's nothing, you know, we're going to be able to, to talk about it at a later date, but a lot of these, these grants are going to be for right around 20 to $25,000 for 20 to 25 households here in Tracy.
And that's strictly kind of like a home loan situation? It's not like a home improvement?
It is. It's, it's a, it's a-
It is, home improvement.
Ding, ding, bae. Roofing siding.
Roofing siding. Even, even actually the, the possibility of some things inside the house too, at, at one point they were, they were given some. There'll be a lot more information coming out as I get the information too.
Alright, great. Well, thank you.
Say, can I add to that? The, the nice thing with them 20 to 25 houses is, correct me if I'm wrong Shane, but I believe the policy that they have with the grant is with code. Every one of them houses that they do any sort of siding or roofing to will get smoke detectors installed and-
Right, yeah.
Hardwired to code, smoke detectors, so it's 25 properties that'll be brought up to code as far as fire protection.
With fire protection and weatherization too, that'll come along with this. That won't even be included in this $579,000.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Anybody got anything else? Questions?
Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah. Really good job.
Your hard work paid off.
It paid off.
Financial management plan for the utility rate study?
So, in, in the past, we've talked a little bit about this and we've talked about utility rate study was kind of more of the focus on it and we've gotten some pretty expensive prices back and this, some of this dates before me. It's, it's a really good idea and it's definitely something that I'm definitely a proponent of, that I feel that the city, we should have a financial management plan moving forward for all the debt service that we're going to have upcoming, potential projects upcoming, because we can't, going into this blindly and just setting levy year after year is not necessarily us focusing on the problem and trying to get the levy down. We should try and, you know, for the residents, we should be trying to get the taxes down while stabilizing our debt. So, part of that is to do utility rate study to make the utilities pay for themselves. That's obviously the idea and, you know, setting it up and moving forward. I did get two bids. Abduaiq and Myers was the lower of the two bids and in fact, if you look at that price, their full package is similar to what we've gotten for just a utility rate study in the past. So, you know, I can see why the council was apprehensive in the past because the utility rate study was extremely expensive, that it was quoted earlier. And I think with some of the software improvements and things like that that they're able to do, plus there is a portion of this, you know, that will be some city workload to do on it as well, you know, providing the information, but I, I feel that, you know, that's a $10,000 savings to use that company versus the other and essentially, they're both providing the same service. I, I read through both packets pretty thoroughly. I don't see any real major differences, just in the layout and how they present the material, but the, the numbers and the, you know, the, the length of time and everything that you're getting is very similar in both packets. I guess my recommendation to council is to consider accepting a bid of Abduaiq and Meyer and hiring them to do a financial management plan, a utility rate study, and then there's also is a debt study as well, that will all encompass in and help us set more rock solid budgets moving forward.
So this is a one time, however long it takes them type deal?
Yeah, they average to take anywhere from three to nine months. So, it, it just depends on, and because of what we've got going on with our huge infrastructure projects, I think ours would probably take longer than a common city. A, a lot of your major cities do this annually with their, you know, they'll have a finance director or a finance officer that will do this full-time. Obviously, we don't have that need to hire someone to do this and work full-time for the city. There's a lot of cost savings into doing this. If, you know, the, the, the ideal scenario for a city would be to do this once every 10 years, to set up a plan, have it overlap over the 10 years and then redo the plan at 10 years as, you know, because nobody can tell us how big the City of Tracy is going to be 10 years from now. We all have hopes and dreams and we all, you know, want certain things for the city, but none of us have a crystal ball that'll tell us. Otherwise, I don't know, what was it, 20, 30 years ago when the population was quite a bit more? It's been declining, I don't think anybody would've guessed that. I think they would've said that it was going to grow. And I think with the new things coming into town, that growth can be harnessed with something like this to hopefully lower the taxes for people.
What's this with the potential USDA eligible?
So, that is, the utility rate study portion, and I apologize, I'm getting to that one here. No, no, I mean, I'm flipping through. That portion of it and the amount is in the 10 years is $11,500. That is eligible for some of the USDA grants that we have. So if we have some money left over in some of that, which, which happens and, you know, you get some left over in a bond or something, if a bid comes in lower or something like that, we can actually use USDA funds for that.
I kinda, I don't know, I see the costs and it makes me kinda go, wow, but-
Can I put something in simple terms? If somebody would've done this in 1985, we wouldn't be bonding for a project right now.
Well, and that's where I was going, is that I think we're chasing it right now and we need to get in front of it. And then get established with a good plan to move forward, because right now, we're just kinda throwing darts every year. That's what, that's the way I feel, you know, it seems to me.
Well, adding the financial plan to the cost and coming in lower than what the utility rate study was, now makes better sense than what we looked at a couple of years back just to do a utility rate study. They're our current, Abduaiq and Myers are our current auditors for the city anyway. They're familiar with our staff, they're familiar with our financial situation. I like the price. I don't like spending the money, but I like the price.
I think with the addition of the potential USDA offset as well, I think it's a good idea too.
I agree. I think we have to do it. I think any of us like to spend the money, but something we have to do.
So-
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid from Abduaiq and Myers for $23,000 to do the financial management plan, the utility rate study. And did you also say a debt?
Yeah, debt management. I'd second that and then under discussion, I would ask, being this is not a budget expense for this year, we're-
I was about to ask that, yeah.
Were we going to do that? Then we should do a resolution of where we're ever pulling from to-
Well, what I'd actually like to do if it, if, if it's okay with the council is first ask USDA if I can use funds from there for the initial portion of it. That'll be the half upfront and then as we get towards the end of the study and we need to, then I could come back to the council, where if it goes into the next year-
Yep.
-we could budget for it then. So, I, I kinda wanted to wait if that's okay for that portion.
Because the longest you have a plan was my question.
Yep. Because their requirement is half upfront-
Yep.
And, let's see, 50% of the contract at the execution, so the 11.5 will put us right in line with that and-
The big thing is, you know, what, we gotta remember to do whatever necessary resolutions are before the end of the year if we took it as an unbudgeted expense.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the financial management plan with Abduaiq and Myers. Okay, on to the request to waive Street Special Assessments, 31 dash 1001240 dash, 0 dash 192 Fourth Street.
So put a memo on your desk and there were some up front here as well. Dale, who's here, has a request to waive special assessment, which the full special assessment is, none of it's been paid, because none of the taxes have been paid since it was imposed. So even though it may show different, on different readouts at the county, if you go on GeoMoose or anything and start looking at that, it, it just moved from one column to the other of not being paid. So the amount requested is the full assessment of $18,913.36 and that's for a parcel located at 192 Fourth Street. It's the, one of you guys can probably tell me better the name of it, but it was an old gas station as far as, I don't know what it was before that, but-
The old station.
Okay. So I don't know if, Dale, if you wanted to come up and talk about it or?
A week ago Saturday, I was presented with the opportunity to purchase a building that my father had owned at one time and ran a shop out of and I drive by it 50 times a day and always said, you know, a lot of things that'd be really neat in there. You know, it'd be nice to get some new windows in it and replace the garage door, maybe a, maybe a coffee shop, maybe a small business of some sho, some sort, you know, there, there's all sorts of endless things, potential that that building has. So I decided to proceed forward a little more and actually am at the, the point of now owning, owning the property, but I run into the situation of, as you guys are talking about budgets and planning for money, I didn't plan on buying a, as my employees call it, shop too, this year and/or the expenses along with fixing up the building. Obviously, I am prepared to pay the tax assessments if need be, but the money that would go into the tax assessments, I could use to expedite the repairs needed to the building, to make it look, to make it look better at least on the outside. I do know there's some violations in the city. I've talked with Shane about some things that would need to be done in a relatively quick fashion, providing we don't flood on July 3rd again. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be done prior to Labor Day. Get some windows in it, get it, a coat of paint on it or depending upon, I guess, what, whatever becomes of it, you know, how the outside would be done, but at least try to get it cleaned up.
We'll never collect the full assessed value on that and I don't think it was properly assessed from that project on the Fourth and Morgan anyway. I think it would be in the city's best interest to waive the assessments on that property just to get in the hands of somebody that will actually clean the place up and make it presentable and put it back on the tax rolls, that, for someone paying the taxes again.
I agree. I think that building has a lot of potential and it would be nice to see it rehabbed and-
That being said, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 201936, waiving that assessment.
I have a- I have a motion. I need a second.
A second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like the motion carries to waive the assessment on 192 Fourth Street.
Thank you guys very much.
Dale, didn't you buy the van too?
I did buy the van as well.
The van is gonna, the van is gonna disappear.
Really?
So. Van came with the property, so I have, actually, the owner of it is actually actively cleaning it out right now. Hopefully by midweek, I'll have the van out of there and I actually talked to Matt out at Greenwood today just about getting some flower pots for the front or something, just to replace the van.
That will be an improvement.
So.
Sell a nice cooler slash flower bed out there that look like old trucks and stuff. You could put a couple of them around there.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. You could make it shaped like the van or something.
So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We had another petition to buy a van for the EBA.
I could maybe even donate that back.
No, it's yours, keep it.
Okay, moving on to the resolutions. Waving Street, we just did that one? Or, yep, we did. And next is Resolution 2019-37, approving work change order number 10 for Phase 1 Infrastructure Improvement.
I don't know if you wanna-
Want me to touch on this?
Yeah, probably.
So last year, I believe last year, they tried to finish sandfilling portions of the old sewer mains, 36 inch pipe on the Phase 1 project. During that process, they ended up filling a basement full of old dust and everything else, so they found other connections that were hooked to footing tiles and other sorts of things, so they aborted the mission with the sand because there is a chance that that could actually fill a basement up when they, when they pumped that stuff in there. The other portions, there's some areas where they could not get sand pumped in. So with that, with that said, you know, 40 years from now, if that pipe isn't filled because it's running under buildings and that pipe failed, you could actually lose corners of buildings or centers of buildings and whatnot and being, it was city-owned pipe, we didn't want the liability, you know, talking in the construction meetings of having that happen 40 years from now. So their correction is, they're gonna dig closer to the houses on these, there's, most of it sandfilled, but the areas they couldn't sandfill, they're gonna dig on both sides of the structures and fill those portions with, it's actually like a flowable fill. It's like really loose concrete, more or less in those areas. And then, and then they can close up that part, portion of the project, so. I don't know if you had any questions on that process?
What is the risk of, of high and high on that or will that mitigate that risk by the, with the flow?
It would mitigate. It's already disconnected from the current sewer, so it's just preventing structural collapse later.
How many places they have to do, roughly?
It's under, I think, two houses and it catches a corner of someone's deck on the other one.
So we're at-
What location?
53,000.
Well, it'd be four digs, but in two different locations. Four ends, I should say.
Oh, yeah. Essentially, Plan A didn't work. Plan B is, is global fill and isolate the locations where it's-
They probably got 80% of the sandfilling completed, but this area would not take sand.
And this is the recommended procedure from our, our engineer at this point of how to remedy the, the situation.
Shane, you mentioned footing, footing drains. They have those in the sump pump intercept and now they're, they're out in the cemetery also.
This had multiple connections. Like I said, one portion, if you see on the, on the change order from the, the Dunex, I think everybody got that change order number 10, there's a plan on there. And right on the corner there by Polk House Place, there's actually a section of storm sewer and they went to pump that full of sand. That would be at the alley at East Emery. Oh, that, there's that one red line there highlighted. That's actually an old storm sewer and it's actually been disconnected prior to Phase 1, but they found it during the project. And that runs right under the guy's house and they went to pump sand in that line and it actually blew the lid off his sump pump. They don't know how many times it ties into the, the footing drains on that house, but they had the footing drains dropping into the storm sewer drac. So, obviously you can't really dig under the house to fix it, so. So those are kind of the obstacles that they ran into.
I'd make a motion then to approve Resolution 201937, change order number 10 for Phase 1.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second that.
First and second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to approve Resolution 201937, work change order number 10 for Phase 1 Infrastructure Improvement. Resolution 2019-38, accepting deputy register reimbursement grant.
So the other resolutions are you spending money, this is when you're accepting money, so you like this one better. What it is, is the state actually is pushing out some funding for part of the MinLars fiasco and that went, that went through during the recent budget pass and City of Tracy is eligible for $21,206.93 for training and any other costs that we had associated with implementing MinLars. And we need a resolution from the council to accept that, its requirement from the state.
I'll make a motion to take the money.
I'll second that one.
First and a second.
Under discussion. Is there a time limit to spend the money, first of all?
No. No, there's no requirements of it at all coming back.
My second question is, I know we're talking about more privacy and stuff, is, are this building upgrades eligible under this grant or is it strictly for software and training?
The, the grant is actually to reimburse expenses already incurred, so what we do with the money is-
Oh, okay. So it's already spent, is what you're telling me.
Yep.
And how much do we have into the system? Does this cover, in other words, does this cover our expenses or portion of it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact numbers, but I would say it's more in training and, you know, and that's something that we really didn't sit and keep track of because they would do an hour of training here for a day and all the, and all the employees would have to do it and then the next week, they'd do it again. And so that was something that we've just, you know, it was ongoing.
So they just give you this check? You don't have to give it in some way or anything, but do what you spend it on, just send it out? Goes back to cover up our-
They got 13 million.
I think all the software is owned by the state.
What's that?
All the computers and software and equipment.
Yeah, they brought in the system. I mean, this is basically a-
It's a training grant for, for money we spend to get people trained and lost productivity.
Lost, and we're sorry we screwed up.
Right.
It's not often the state gives no strings.
Well, they're that deep, they might as well go a little deeper, I guess, I don't know.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for, to approve Resolution 2019-38, accepting deputy register reimbursement grant. Oh, on to municipal accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to accept the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage with planning minutes from 5.6 and 5.15 and the library minutes from 4.4.
First and second, discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, planning minutes from 5.619 and 5.1519 and the library minutes from 4.419. Okay, breakthrough beverage?
I'd make a motion to approve- I'd make a motion to approve breakthrough beverage expenses.
On second.
First and a second, discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to breakthrough beverage. Unfinished business, update on the Greenwood Nursery and the downtown plants.
Last time you asked me to get a little bit more clarification, I sent you guys an email stating the, where the plants were located and such. They, so the count is 51, the plants include ones that have been through various businesses all over town, and I think, I think we're maybe, part of the misconception was, or the disconnect was, when we had budgeted for these last year, I approved to Greenwood Nursery to plant those plants in February. So on behalf of the city, I made the commitment to that, being it was a budgeted item, and I know that a couple of you have reached out to me since then, and we discussed it a little bit, and I think that what we should do is during our budget planning session this year, discuss how we want to move forward, so we don't get into that entrapped situation where we just have to do it, you know, where, you know, just because it's in the budget, we had to spend it type of a thing. And, you know, the commitment was made, whether it was right or wrong on my behalf, I...
So it was what, five, 5,000?
It is 5,225. It was a, we budgeted 6,250, and so it was a decrease of almost, just a little over 1,000 bucks.
But that's just for watering, yeah?
It's for watering, and the four planters that the city provides, two are out during the summer, and two are out during the winter holiday month.
So before our budget meeting, will you have more discussions with the chamber?
I'd actually like...
Or after we have our...
I'd like to keep it ongoing, I'd like to discuss with you guys what you'd like to see moving forward with this, then go to the chamber, and then come back to you guys, and I don't want to turn it into sidewalk discussion, but I wanna, I wanna, you know, get that clear direction, so we're not just doing what was historically done.
Tonight, you want that cleared, right?
Sure, if you, you know, if you guys want to discuss it, and you know what you'd like moving forward, absolutely. Because we've just been going off the history up until, it's, we always did it this way, it was always done.
Exactly, except for the last meeting, that's the first, that is the first I heard about a commitment to pay for water, all the plants in the downtown area. And I think that's, well, it personally rubbed me, I got plants out in front of my property, you can combine water that, too, for that amount of money, but that's, you know, it's, I was under the impression you contracted for that plant, that came with it, I didn't know we were paying for the water, and that just didn't set well with me, so.
That's a lot of money to water.
I guess I understand the beautifying the city and stuff like that, but I think businesses also have to take responsibility. Greenwood has a program for cemeteries to beautify your grave sites and stuff, where you pay them, when you purchase the plant, you pay them to also do the watering, and it's up to you. I, I think it should be the same way with the business owners. They buy the plant, and they, at the same time, Jeff gives them the same, a deal. If you want me to plant them and water them all summer, it's gonna cost this much, if you just want to buy the plants from me, and you water them, the plant is this much. And I think we should get out of the business of watering flowers.
We do want to, like you said, beautify the downtown area, but I guess to just kind of reiterate what you're saying is, it's a group effort, it's a community thing.
Well, because citizens are sitting here saying, you're using my taxes to water businesses' flowers, you know, why am I paying for them to beautify their building?
And to be clear, anybody from the public, if they want to pay to have a pot hung on one of them light poles out there, could pay for the pot and pay for the watering of it, you know, it's, I don't know if it's right for, we've committed in the past, we beautify in front of our buildings, and we've committed in the past to a few baskets, I've got no problem with that, somebody's gotta lead the way, but to pick up the tab for all of it, is where all the maintenance, I should say, is...
Yeah, and we're using tax money to do it, so I don't know that's proper.
It'd be simpler to market it, if you want to buy a basket downtown, it'll cost you 200 bucks for the summer, just let it, forget it. And then he picks up an extra 10 bucks, if it's $95 for the basket, 95 to water it, whatever, that's...
So if I'm understanding correctly, you guys would like to, in the future, dedicate to the pots in front of City Hall, and the watering of those pots only, the hanging ones in front of City Hall as well, or...
Well, I'm, I'm even gonna say, why aren't we watering our own pots that are on the ground floor? We pay a maintenance man, why? I mean, my goodness, we water flowers everywhere in the hospital.
Well, we actually water some of yours out there, too.
And to be honest with you, I think they've been getting double watered.
Yeah. Well, and again, this is a historic thing that was before my time, and I, I'm just falling into this, and...
I appreciate you bringing it up and...
You guys just gotta tell me what you want. Yep. I got thick skin. Like you said, so I would see, we can, I can talk about watering our own, I think the problem was with the watering of the ones that are overhead, it takes specialized equipment, and they do a great job of that.
Yep. I'm talking about the two that were set out on the ground level here.
And I would imagine that what happened was, and Shane, you could probably touch base on this better, but that originally, the hanging ones were to be watered by Public Works, and they died the one year, and then they decided to contract it out to them, they have the equipment, because they do the graveyards and things like that, so it was contracted out to them, and the city absorbed that because they were doing it as a Public Works Department before. Am I correct in that?
We never watered the pots on the sidewalk, but...
No, it was just hanging baskets.
No, just the hanging ones, right?
It just kind of morphed, or mission creep, is a better term for it than...
Yeah.
So then my question is, how, what about the hanging ones? You want that to be put onto the businesses that are sponsoring it, and...
Whoever buys, I look, I'm a pretty simple person, if I'm the one selling the flower, I'm gonna say this basket of flowers costs you X, and I'll take care of the watering, and they collect X, and not any other middleman, or, and then, so if he's selling it for $95 and charging us $95 a pot to water it, he needs to sell it for 200 bucks. I mean, that's, to me, is the simplest way of doing it.
But his, that's his choice.
That's his choice, but however they want to deal with it, pay it for the watering, that's whoever buys the pot, they need to work that out with him.
So in the, so my, I'll go to the chamber and to him, and I will go back to them and say, we're willing to sponsor two pots, and we'll water them ourselves in front of City Hall next year, and, and then the holiday ones, I don't think the holiday ones are watered at all, but...
And I'm not saying that we, but this can be at a later meeting when we do the budget, ask, okay, do we want to do any hanging baskets out front?
And how many?
And how many?
Historically, in the past, we did six.
You know, so I'm, I think we still want to do some hanging, and then we'll pay for our hanging ones to get watered. But it's up to each individual business to decide.
It'd be simpler if they just build the plant with the watering contract with it, and...
I'll reach out to him and discuss that, and...
And I mean, this isn't written in stone, I mean, we can reapproach this.
Well, but that's what you can then also take to him, and if the chamber wants to get involved, because it was originally their, one of their projects.
They were doing the legwork to sell for them, and I mean, that's, and that kind of, I don't know where all that went, but...
It started, the history I was told is that it was started as a chamber project, it started to lose a little bit of traction, and then it came into the city watering it, they had a problem watering them, just equipment-wise, and then...
Mission creep. It just got easier to rely on the city to take care of it, and we didn't have to do our...
Let's reset it back where it began.
So for this year, we're okay to pay this invoice, then?
Yeah, I mean, we committed to it.
We're committed, so. Do we need a motion to that effect?
Please, like, just because it was so discussed.
Okay, can I get a motion then to pay for...
Say again?
Got a first and a second, any more question or discussion? Motion is approved to pay for watering flowers. Anybody got any communication?
I'm gonna put an ad out this week for mosquito spraying, I know that question's been brought up, probably start next week, get it, get out in the paper, and then we will be posting notices on Facebook, Nixle, and the public access channel, so kind of look for that, and if you hear a loud whine coming down the street, just make sure your windows are closed, and try to stay indoors until we pass through, so. Does that think you're in ads, too? According to the label, yes. Nats, flies, and mosquitoes.
That was the big question.
It is a contact killer, it is not a residual, so it'll kill whatever's out there at the time of spraying, but it will have to be reapplied, you know, frequently throughout the summer, as we usually do, so.
Will it have any effect, or is there any ill effect on pets, dogs, cats?
Never had any in the past.
Animals?
It's best to keep them indoors, but if they're out, it's not gonna kill them either, so. And then check your property, too, if you have water sitting anywhere, dump it out, if it's not necessarily there to be there. Any tires, old stagnant pools, and all that stuff is breeding grounds for mosquitoes, so if you have any stagnant water, refresh your bird baths and stuff like that, so.
Well, and I did notice, I know for my lawn, as it got longer, time to cut, it got worse, so they like the long grass, the shorter, keep the lawns mowed, you'll help that issue.
Go ahead.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
First and second, any discussion or questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn carries.
Go to them.
It's all yours, that's why they're there.
Thank you.